...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we are here tonight for our first appointment, which is for a hearing for Sergeant James Sullivan. I'm going to turn it over to Attorney Puffer for a quick explanation. Oh, I can give him the microphone.
Hey, yeah, my name is Mark Puffer. I'm an attorney in Concord. I represent, I want to emphasize, I represent the town of Barnstead. I don't represent Chief Poyer. I don't represent Sergeant Sullivan. I represent the town. And my, my advice is to, in this case, the Board of Selectmen is my, is the focus of my, my advice. This is a hearing pursuant to RSA 41:48. And I'll read you the pertinent parts of that statute. It says, "Any permanent constable or police officer who was either elected or appointed for full-time duty," which Sergeant Sullivan is, "and who is in compliance with the requirements of RSA 106L6," which just means he's certified by the state as a full-time officer. "That officer shall continue to hold such office during good behavior unless sooner removed for cause by the selectmen after notice of hearing." So in this case, there has been notice to Sergeant Sullivan and his attorney of the documents that Chief Poyer wants to present to the Board of Selectmen. Karen Montgomery is going to swear in any witnesses, including the chief, under oath. And I would just make sure I advise the Board of this. You are to remain independent. You are not to show any bias for or against Sergeant Sullivan or for or against Chief Poyer. You should not in any way indicate that you have prejudged this matter. You should decide this matter totally on the evidence that you hear tonight from the chief, from Sergeant Sullivan, from others, whoever may testify before you. Now, as part of the prior notice of what the chief would be presenting, I asked the chief to present me a copy of all of the documents that he would want to present to the Board. He did that a week or so ago. And about seven or eight days ago, I sent all those documents to Sergeant Sullivan's attorney, so she would have ample opportunity to review them. Each of the Board members also have, and they're all Bates stamped, in other words, 1 through 275, whatever the page numbers are. So for ease and everybody referring to the same, the same thing. So chief, when you, when you talk about the documents, you know, tell us what the page numbers are and so forth, that they're all at the bottom of the, of each page. In the end, it's going to be the Board's, the Board of Selectmen's determination as to whether to terminate Sergeant Sullivan, to take other disciplinary action against him, or to take no disciplinary action against him. It's going to be their choice. In terms of the scope of this hearing, it's going to be the presentation of the chief's concerns about Sergeant Sullivan. This is not a trial of the chief. For example, there is an MRI report which had to do with investigation, as many of you are aware, because it's become public, of, of the chief. That can be gotten into as a way of showing, I suppose, the motive of the chief in bringing this action. I wouldn't be shocked if that's a contention of Sergeant Sullivan. We'll see. But we're not going to retry all those issues, those cases, those, those issues, those charges or complaints about the chief have been investigated, and the Board did whatever it did in terms of disciplinary action towards the chief. So there may be a time when someone, and the Board is the final arbiter of what it wants to hear, but there may be times when we have to cut it short and say, "The focus is on these documents here." Okay? That's all I have. Karen, you want to swear in the, in the chief? If you'd like to. Yeah, just go.
You have, I'm sorry, what? Okay.
Yeah, are these procedural or?
They're, they're happening in procedural, yeah. I think we own records of two items, and I am going to address them to the top.
Okay, well, then let's allow the chief, my suggestion there would be to allow the chief to present his testimony. And then you, Attorney Verdrager, will have ample opportunity to cross-examine the chief and present your own, your own evidence after the chief is done. I think we have, we have to keep order here. Yep, yep, you'll have ample opportunity to present your case.
So as a quick review in how the hearing will be working, Chief Poyer will present his information. The Sergeant Sullivan will have the opportunity to cross-examine, cross-examine, and then Sergeant Sullivan will have the opportunity to present his information. So with that being said, chief, please explain your case.
Thank you. Thank you for meeting with us tonight. Before we start discussing what's in the book in front of you, I feel it's important, I feel it's important to note that, and give you an idea of how a police report comes into the Barnstead Police Department, what kind of reports that we actually pull to investigate these reports, and how we move forward with an investigation. So to give you, to give you a hypothetical example, if someone calls in and wants to report that their car was broken into, an officer would pull what's called a CFS, a Call for Service. And it's a brief narrative that is done. The officer would then go out to the scene, investigate the incident, and then the officer would pull what's called an offense report, or better known as an OF report. And you'll see a lot of these OF reports inside the documentation that you have in front of you here. So then what happens? The officer investigates. He writes his narrative within the offense report. And if there's supplemental reports to be done, additional reports, follow-ups, investigative report, he does what's called a supplemental report, and that's included in the offense report as well. So those reports are then reviewed by the supervisor. And oftentimes, the supervisor will sign off on those reports, and they are sent off either to be prosecuted or to be placed into the case file management system in IMC. Oftentimes, what will happen is if a, an investigation is, is a lengthy investigation, we discuss that case almost on a regular basis. What I do on a daily basis with my officers is I have daily staff meetings, which consist of my sergeant, a patrolman, if there's one working, as well as my administrative assistant. And we go over any outstanding cases that we sit there, we review. I give guidance on what to do next, in a particular case, what to do for follow-ups, and things of that nature. We also discuss what's happened over the last 24 hours, hour period within the town of Barnstead. We discuss all the calls for services. And again, I give guidance as to whether or not we need any follow-ups done, we can just close out the case. So what brought us here tonight was back on March 15th of this year. I had come into work, and I noticed on top of the trash can in the emergency operations center, there was a bunch of property labels. So what these property labels are, in property as evidence, lost or stolen property, we pull an offense number, a case number, and we also pull a property number. And this is all documented within IMC. And then this property label goes on the property, and it gets processed according to our policy, gets placed into the temporary evidence storage locker, and then it's later processed by an evidence officer. So I thought it was quite odd to see these, considering it was a 19, it was a 19, 2019 case. In a way, you can tell it's a 2019 case, because the number starts with 19, followed by, you know, three additional numbers, by the letters P R, property. So when I saw that, I looked up, I looked, I looked up the case, and I saw that it was a, it was a, it was a juvenile who had committed suicide back in 2019. I went back, I looked at the report, and I noticed that that particular, let me back up. So I went back and I reviewed the video to see how these got into the trash. And I noted that Sergeant Sullivan had printed these up the night before when he was working on, on the midnight shift. I went back and I looked at the report from 2019, and the 19-97. It was the suicide of a young lady. And I noted that on the, on the evening of, or on the day of March 14th, 2021, Sergeant Sullivan had completed his report, his narrative investigative report. He was the detective sergeant called in that day to investigate this incident, and he only completed his report 23 months later.
And chief, could you just refer to page numbers, like at the bottom?
I'm sorry, that's on page one.
Just for everybody, yeah, okay.
As a result of looking into this, he was written up, I wrote up a letter of reprimand for violation of rules and regulations, as, as stated in our SOP manual. For submitting reports, under section T, "All members are required to submit reports promptly, accurately, and completely on the required forms, as well as neglect of duty. Members will not absent themselves from assigned duty without leave, or fail to take suitable and appropriate police action when a crime, public disorder, or other incidents require police attention." He, in looking at the, I noted that he not only did one report that night, several reports that night. That one incident, he did five reports.
Right, is that documents 1 through 5 in your?
That is documents 1.
Pages 1 through 9, okay.
Again, this is a very serious incident. It was a, a young person who had committed suicide. And as a detective sergeant, he did no reports or no follow-up until 23 months later. So fast forward to three days later, I came in again. These case labels in the trash, sitting on top of the trash. I went back, reviewed the video, and saw that Sergeant Sullivan had printed these labels up the night before and discarded them in the trash. So these particular labels are offense labels. These are labels that would be put on a case file like this. And these are red to detonate that they are, they are juvenile files. So there were 12 of them in the trash. I went back that day. I looked at what these offense numbers refer to, what cases they refer to. And there were 12 juvenile cases. Or some of them were submitted by DCYF to us. Some of them were submitted by the school. I'm going to skip ahead to first one, which is 21-53. And I'll give you the page number. Sorry, 21-52. This was an assault that occurred on March 18th of 2019. Excuse me, oh, page 120. So the incident occurred on March 18th of 2019, and Sergeant Sullivan did not pull a report until 24 months later. He pulled the report on March 16th, 2021. And the report, again, it was a report received from DCYF pertaining to information brought forward by the Barnstead Elementary School regarding some children that were being abused. So although this report was reported to us back in 2019, no one at the police department would have known that this incident report came in, because Sergeant Sullivan had not done a report on it until March 7th, 2021. The next one is on page 131. It's case number 2153. And this is a report that came in to us on May 8th of 2019. This is an incident in which it was a domestic violence situation. It was reported that the female potty was believed to be living somewhere in Barnstead, and that the suspect was a danger to the, to the victim. There was no follow-up done on it to find out where this woman may be residing. And unfortunately, a few days later, she was killed in the state of Maine, while the suspect also killed himself. Again, this report was never brought to my attention, and a report on it was only done on March 17th, 2021, 22 months later. The next case is on page 146. And it's incident, offense number 2154. Involves an, an incident at the school that was reported to the Barnstead Police Department. And Sergeant Sullivan did his report on March 17th, 2021. The report is basically two lines. It says on 5/20/19, "Two reports were taken regarding being involved in acts of bullying to, to other students at the Barnstead Elementary School. Two victims were, against redacted. Both instances were handled internally and all parent. No follow-up, no further information." So the next incident, 155. It's another incident of bullying at the school. It appears could be, it looks like the same incident involving a different, a different child. The next incident, 2156, on page 162. Involves who had gone to school with bruises and dog bites and stitches. Sergeant Sullivan received the report on May 15th, 2019, and never did a report or follow-up on it until March 17th, 2021. There was no follow-up. So in looking at the DCYF report, it almost mirrors what is in Sergeant Sullivan's narrative. And I saw that as a, as being consistent with his reports and the DCYF reports. 2157, on page 172. I find this quite interesting, and I'm going to read a little bit to you. First, I'm going to read page 179. And of course, it's redacted, and it's a DCYF report. It says, "Is the child and is incarcerated in Concord Men's State Prison for parole violations and other pending charges from New Hampshire State Police related to drug and felony possession of weapon charges. Also charges coming forth from the fire marshals and against the father. Mother and child also known to local law enforcement, considered transient. Child was last known to be staying with his grandfather in Barnstead. Mom is transient. Mom recently stayed at an address in Gilmington, however, is considered to be couch surfing. Mom, up until," again, it's redacted. I'm going to skip down to, to the bottom of it, rather than for the sake of time. DCYF workers concerned that the child may be, may be covering up more facts and risk of the harm, harm to the child. There's a phone number here for us that we could, we could reach the person. Going back to Sergeant Sullivan's report, Sergeant Sullivan, in his narrative, you'll see the last paragraph, last sentence, page 174. He says, "Follow-up needed to assure that the child is taken care of properly." That was on March 17th, 2021. I mean, the report, it's two and a half paragraphs long, and this is a report of a child that needs some assistance by us. Page 181. This is another report of abuse and neglect of some foster children. And it's 21-58OF. Sergeant Sullivan writes a three-paragraph report, you'll note on page 183. And if you look at page 188, his report basically mirrors what the DCYF worker, what her report states. I'm not going to go into detail. I don't think it's needed. These are abuse and neglect reports. Children are being abused, whether it's physically or sexually. 2159OF, which is on page 194, involves an incident in which a, a bus driver blocked a student from getting off a bus. And again, this was reported to us on August 29th, 2019. And no report is done until March 17th, 2021. And it's two-paragraph report. 2161, which is on page 201, involves a Boy Scout camp in which a child is physically assaulted by some other children, a fighting altercation type case. A report is, a report came in on July 8th, 2019. Sergeant Sullivan never does a report until March 18th of 2021. 2162, on page 207. Barnstead Police Department. Sergeant Sullivan received a report from DCYF regarding a child that has showed signs of assault, is acting out in school, and has been, had disruptive behavior. Sergeant Sullivan received that report on October 10th, 2019. It never does a report until March 18th, 2021. Page 216, case number 21-63OF. Involves a report of sexual abuse, a report that came in from DCYF. So he received, Sergeant Sullivan writes in his report on March 18th, 2021. On December 17th, 2019, at 10:19 hours, a law enforcement letter was received by, from DCYF, a local employee, Melissa Giffords. There were concerns of possible sexual abuse based on some actions of the child. Again, I'm not going to go into detail on this, but it's a one-paragraph report. No follow-up. DCYF did a report on it. Go back to page 10. Case number 19-114. Page 10. This is an incident involving a fatal overdose involving fentanyl. Sergeant Sullivan was Sergeant Sullivan was called in to duty to take over the crime scene and investigate the incident. This occurred on April 17th, 2019. Sergeant Sullivan was the OIC that day. And he never completed a report. Strike that. He did a report and it was on March 14th, 2021. 14 months after the fatal overdose. Page 24. This is a case that Sergeant Sullivan was put in charge of. It was a large embezzlement case involving the town's SAU office. He did a one-page report on the incident. This involved well over $100,000 theft. He was given a lot of leeway to run and get this done. He was given orders to do follow ups. Eventually, we hired another detective part time. I assigned the case to him. He completed the case, completed all the, all the arrest warrants and all the pertinent paperwork and the subject was arrested.
Page 34.
Yes. Right. Yeah, the top, if you look at the top header, it says Benton Court on page 14. He did that report and Sergeant Sullivan's report is on page 22 and 23. Skip on over to page 26. This is a report that came in. This is a individual who committed suicide. We had gotten a report from Alton to go check on the individual. He committed suicide and Sergeant Sullivan and Officer Geely found the individual deceased in his home. Sergeant Sullivan never did a report on the incident. And approved the report for Officer Geely. In addition, the photographs, the crime scene photographs were never uploaded into IMC until March of this year, when I had to order him to place the, upload the, the photographs into the system. So 2076 on page 30. Involves a deceased male that was found in the woods off of Pinio Road. Sergeant Sullivan was on that day, was placed in charge of this investigation. And had only done a one-page report for that incident. We have a dead body in the woods. We have a one-page report done on it. There were circumstances which were suspicious as to why the individual was out in the woods. I'm not going to go into details about it. He was instructed to do follow ups, find the last person that was with him. We knew who the last person was. We just had to locate that person. He was given quite a few instructions on to do certain things to help close out this case. He never followed my instructions. And on March of this year, Sergeant Sullivan was working midnight, the midnight shift. Sergeant Sullivan that evening got a call from another agency on January 21st of 2021. And when he got the call, he went down to the detective's office where the other detective had his office. He removed the file because the, the case file had been given to the other detective to follow up. He removed the file. And he changed his report. He added additional stuff to his initial report. So his initial report, which was the one page I just showed you, turned into two and a half pages, followed by another report, 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 another report.
What, what page numbers are you referring to there?
Okay. This is page 30. And the reason why they haven't gotten copies of this report is because at the time when this was given out, it was still an active case.
But, but when you were saying another report, another report, another report, those were not.
Those were not in, in, he just did those reports in January of this year. So he did, he did those, all those additional reports, 10 additional reports after receiving information about this dead body in the woods from another police agency. What page, sorry? All those screenshots, screenouts? Yeah, this is, this is a D. I don't, that's not, that's not, that report's not generated by us. That's, that's generated by, by DCYF. So we'd, we'd have to follow up with them. I don't know what all those dates are. Yeah, I don't, honestly, I don't know what those are. Right. So get to that, but yeah, we'll, we'll, yeah, we'll get to that. Yep. So 20-9, which is on page 34. This, um, this is an incident in which the Barnstead Police Department responded to an, an address here in Barnstead, which resulted in a consent search of the home. Both verbal and written consent was given by the occupants of the home. This was captured on body worn camera video, which we have. And at some point Sergeant Sullivan had the case closed out and he advised. Well, Prosecutor Esti will, will speak on that. As a result of the information that he had given Prosecutor Esti, Prosecutor Esti filed a motion with the court indicating that there were no search warrant exceptions. And when I found to, to the, for us to search that home. When I found out that this motion was filed, I had a copy of the motion. I reviewed it and I knew that the information that Sergeant Sullivan had provided to Tony Esti, our prosecutor, was false. And I requested that Tony Esti, the prosecutor, correct the record and file a new motion with the court. As, you know, we did have consent to search the home, both verbal and written consent. I have a copy of the written consent form here and we have video, multiple videos of us getting consent from the owners of that property that day. So Sergeant Sullivan is, is receiving a write-up for that as well. That information puts us in a poor light, not only with the community, but with the courts. When we are filing motions that, that, that are not truthful, that are misleading, that puts us in a very bad light. And we cannot, we can't have that in this profession. Page 56. Now, this is an incident that came in on, reported to us on 5/10 of 2020. It involved an individual threatening someone else here in Barnstead. Sergeant Sullivan did a report on it on March 13th, 2021. There was also lack of follow up in that incident where someone could have been charged as well. Okay. Incident 20-107 involves a box with two firearms and a knife that were shipped to a address here in Barnstead. Sergeant Sullivan went and retrieved the items, but he never did a report on it. He pulled a case number. There is no narrative. So we have firearms sitting in our evidence room that was not tagged properly in a timely manner, sitting in there where they were prior to getting into the evidence room. I'm not even quite sure. Number 20-188, which is on page 64. Appears to be another incident involving the same firearms. He pulled a case number, an offense number, labeled it as suspicious activity. And again, no narrative. So I don't know how these guns got here. What are we doing with them? We have firearms. We have report numbers that he pulled offense numbers for. But again, no narrative. And the reports, it came in on 5/28 of September 1st, but there's no, no narrative. So I don't know what it's about. 20-207. Which is on page 79. This involves an incident in which Sergeant Sullivan responded to on September 10th of 20, I'm sorry, September 13th of 2020, involving a motor vehicle accident in which a telephone pole was struck. Car rolled over. The car was also reported stolen. Review of Sergeant Sullivan's report, he found the individuals, the individual walking later on that morning down the road and gave him a courtesy ride. Sergeant Sullivan had never completed a report on it until November 12th, when I returned for duty and found the case file and ordered him to complete warrants and follow ups on the case and to also complete an arrest warrant for the individual. There was also a child in the car. So he did a warrant for conduct after unauthorized use of motor vehicle, driving after verification, but he never did a complaint for endangering the welfare of a child. Even though the mother complained to Sergeant Sullivan that the child had been hurt. Skip, go back to page 73. Case number 206OF. Sergeant Sullivan had taken a burglary report. Page 73. He had taken a burglary report. And my administrative assistant had asked him a couple of times and also emailed him to notify him that the insurance company had sent us a check and that they wanted the photographs. Sergeant Sullivan ignored her request, ignored her email and ignored my emails until I had to ask more than once. Finally, he uploaded the photographs and we're able to get the, the photographs to the, to the insurance company. On November 24th, I had sent Sergeant Sullivan an email asking him to complete any reports regarding the SAU case. And his only response to me was that the SAU case was in, was in the process. I'm sorry, that's off of my notes. I'm not going to go through each of these. These are, and I can provide his attorney with a copy of this, but these are all examples of Sergeant Sullivan's insubordination, whether mostly through emails, when I was asking him for information regarding cases, regarding investigations, or just simple request, and he just neglected to, to respond to anything. I have multiple emails, I'm not, I'm not going to go over each one of them. The board has, has seen some of them, I'm sure, and there was an email.
Chief, is this part of what you provided?
I, nine, let me check. Yes, I'll read this there. This is a, on page 258. This is a, a write-up that I, and is provided in your material. "On January 25th, this is my email to Sergeant Sullivan. I sent you an email reminding you that you were not to bother the town administrator or the board of selectmen with emails or requests, which I handle as your supervisor. I told you that any communication you have, whether you, whether email or otherwise, you must go through me. I also advise you that if you had any questions or concerns, or that if there was something that you did not understand, then you could come see me. You did not respond. On February 13th, 2021, after you did not follow my order and emailed the town administrator without going through your chain of command, I again emailed you and reminded you the previous order that any communications with the town administrator or the board of selectmen must be done through the chief of police in order to streamline the process and to make for less confusion. You did not respond. On February 27th, 2021, you emailed the town administrator and all the board of selectmen advising them that you do not want the police chief," and I'm quoting you, quoting his email, "to have any direct communication with you in any way, shape, or form to include through any Barnstead Police Department employee regardless of rank or status. You also, you also made a demand in your email that the police chief is no longer to be in your physical presence. Additionally, you said that the police chief should only be in your presence or have communication with you if the town administrator or three board of selectmen members are present or, or are in all the communications. On March 12th, 2021, you emailed the town administrator and the board of selectmen after previously being ordered to go through your chain of command. You asked the town administrator and the board of selectmen operational questions, which by virtue of the chief's position in the previous order should have been addressed to the police chief. Your demands and repeated flagrant insubordination have no place in a structured police organization that provides emergency services. Your failure, your failure to follow direct orders to complete the simplest task shows that you do not and will not cooperate with the agency's directives, general orders, or standards of operating procedures. This behavior will not be tolerated within the Barnstead Police Department. Your flagrant insubordination and what is acceptable fall under the department's SOP 2017-022 discipline." And I have the emails again, I'm not going to read each and every email, but it's, it was consistent. To, to back up, you know, how, to answer your question, how did this get started or how, how did we go back to 2019? So, as I mentioned earlier, I found, I found all these property labels that were in the trash. So I started, I actually had asked the captain to start looking in, into some of this, particularly the juvenile stuff, when a few days later, we found all of these juvenile case labels in the trash. I asked the captain to go back and start looking at, see what some of this stuff was. And as soon as we started digging, we didn't have to dig very deep, we started seeing this stuff. And when we found these in the trash, the juvenile files, we went and found these in Sergeant Sullivan's office in his file. And these are all files that he had just made up on the 17th, files from 2000, cases from 2019, 2020, child abuse cases. So, DC, DCYF. So DCYF sends us the information and we should be working in conjunction with DCYF cooperatively. If you look at the Attorney General's Manual, it describes, it describes how we should be conducting these investigations. So I, I presented these cases to you. I didn't go over each and every, you got it in front of you, so I didn't go over each and every policy violation, but there's approximately 30 policy violations here, whether it's insubordination, neglected duty, failure to follow orders, I mean, there's just, there's multiple infractions for each of these, each of these incidents. There's also another incident here. And I don't think we discussed, I want to make sure that you have it. Yes. So 13-20-310, and I got to find out what page it's on here. So it's on page 97. I'm just going to read it, might make it a little bit easier for everybody to understand. "In October of 2020, the Assistant Valnap County Attorney, Ernie Barnes, contacted Sergeant Sullivan regarding a motion that her office had received from a defendant requesting that her two firearms, a pistol and a shotgun that were seized by the Barnstead Police Department be returned. At that time Sergeant Sullivan told the county attorney that we did not seize a shotgun, nor did we have in our possession at that time. Subsequently, the county attorney, based on Sergeant Sullivan's information, filed an erroneous motion with the court indicating that the Barnstead Police Department did not have the shotgun. In January 2021, the defendant and the owner of the firearm came to the Barnstead Police Department with a photograph of the seized shotgun, which was green in color, which the Barnstead Police Department had displayed on their Facebook page at the time that the, of the arrest and the seizure of the firearm. An immediate search of the evidence room done by me and one of the evidence officers quickly turned up the easily recognizable colored shotgun belonging to the defendant. After discovery of the shotgun in our evidence room, the Valnap County Attorney was notified and a new motion was filed with the court to return the firearm to its rightful owner. It was also discovered that Sergeant Sullivan never checked with either of the department's evidence officers to inquire if we had this shotgun in our possession or in our custody without the evidence room, within the evidence room of the Barnstead Police Department. Your failure to investigate or complete reports is a clear violation of Department standards of operating procedures. A truthfulness under this policy, members will speak the truth at all times and under all circumstances, men will not knowingly make false reports or enter a cause to be entered falsely or improper information into any report or department document." And it goes on to talk about prohibited contact. So I was at the station when this woman came into the police department. Sergeant Ryan had spoken to her in the lobby, came back to my office and showed me the picture on the woman's phone, which was on our police department Facebook page. Immediately, he and I went down to the evidence room and most shotguns are black and brown. I mean, this was green. It was, I found it within seconds, it was sitting right there. So I contacted the county attorney. The county attorney provided me with some emails, an email from Sergeant Sullivan back, which was responded by Sergeant Sullivan from the county attorney. And as a result of that communication, an erroneous motion was filed with the court indicating that the Barnstead Police Department did not have this firearm. Again, this does not look good for us, for the, for the department, it puts us in a bad light. So I'm bringing this before the board tonight because as you all know, this career, we need to be, have ethics, truthfulness, and we need to do our job and do it diligently. And this has not been getting done by Sergeant Sullivan. These policy violations are flagrant violations and there's no place within law enforcement community for this type of behavior or actions. Yes. Yeah, so, like I tried to explain, like I tried to explain in the beginning, so what happens is Sergeant Sullivan was handling the majority of the juvenile cases, anything juvenile related, he was handling it. So oftentimes, he would communicate directly with DCYF, with the investigator themselves, he would communicate with them. They would send him directly the reports, whether it was via fax, whether it was via email. And what he should have been doing is he should have been pulling a call for service and an offense number. So an initial call for service, basically saying, "On such and such a date, this report came in, I'll be doing further follow-up." And then he, once he did his follow-up, or was working on it, he should have pulled an offense number, an investigation number, and then completed his reports. Daily, we have staff briefings, bring them into the office, what do you got going on, what's been happening over the last 24 hours? But if he's not, if he's communicating directly with DCYF and he's not pulling these call for service numbers, I have no way of knowing, nobody in the department has any way of knowing that these calls are coming in. So if he's just taking them and putting them aside and not doing anything with them, then nobody, nobody knows otherwise, unless somebody reaches out to me and says, you know, says something. On occasion, if, if something came in through the fax, came, if it came to me, I'd give it to Sergeant Sullivan, because he's doing, he's doing the juvenile investigations, tell him to pull a call for service, do a follow-up and keep me in the loop. No, no, they're all handled the same, they're all handled the same. But what I'm saying is they come in differently sometimes. Sometimes they'll come in through dispatch, a good majority of the time they'll just come in, they'll call us, DCYF will call us and say, "Hey, we're going to be sending you over a law enforcement letter, you guys follow up on this," or "We're going to be going to pay them a visit, can you come with us?" And then you work together on the case. Yes, so there were, there were follow-ups. He had, I knew he had done some interviews. I had asked him a number of times where the reports were. He never showed me any reports. I'm working on them, it was always like, "I'm working on them, I'm working on it, I'll get you the file, I'm working on it." That, that's, that's what I can tell you. He, he never produced the reports to me, he never gave me the reports. At one point, it was when I had gotten back, I had asked him about the follow-ups and what was going on with that particular case. And I believe he said he needed the video and we captured the video. But again, no reports, no nothing on it. The case, I had to give the case to Detective Encarnatio to complete that case. You know, you got me thinking about, you know, I, I think about some of the major cases and, and one of them was that, that case out in the woods. And when I asked him for the, for that particular case, he handed us a large brown folder. There was that one report that I told you about in it, and there was a brown paper bag in it with the deceased cellphone, earbuds, and charger. This, these items should have been placed in evidence. You found it on, on the person's body, process it, whatever you need to do with it and put it in evidence. So, you know, if we needed this as, as, as evidence in a homicide case or any type of case, we, we'd lose the chain of custody evidence, we'd lose it. It's an important piece of evidence. I can tell you that, that when I got back, that phone was in fact given to state police. State police has followed up on that case and has made great strides. And there was evidence obtained from that phone that Sergeant Sullivan never got, that state police was able to obtain. So we would never be able to use it because we lost the chain of custody on it.
Yes, I just, one question on these, not any particular one, but these DCYF reports that are incidences that were sent to us in 2019, but the report was not done until 2021. Do we know if, when they came in in 2019, if any investigation was done at that point?
We are, I have the captain following up on some of that stuff right now with DCYF. We're going to go through every single one of them, find out the status and what was done and what needs, if anything, still needs to be done. done and what needs, if anything, still needs to be done.
She is going to be in the microphone, so that she can hear her own.
She can take the question.
Yeah, she can take all of them.
We can have a 10-minute.
Everyone could take their seats. We're going to come back at 7:06. Right now, we're going to have Sergeant Sullivan's attorney cross-examine Police Chief Poirier. Sorry about that.
Is there a mute button on this if I want to talk to my client? So as an initial matter, I'd like to go back to housekeeping items. I'm going to introduce myself again. I'm Tommy Verjager. I'm Detective Sergeant Sullivan's attorney, and I have some duress of concern to be raised. There's multiple duress violations with this hearing, in my opinion. We've requested material that has not been provided. There were several items tonight, as the board saw, that were referenced, held up, as though they were in evidence, and in particular, references to videos that were described in detail that were not provided. Those items should have been provided to my client. We should have had the opportunity to review them more than seven days, I think, before the hearing. the hearing. I also have concerns about board members, and I'd like to know if any of you have had communications directly with the chief about the evidence presented tonight and the allegations against my client. You're already not listening to me? Thank you. Okay. It's my position that Chairmanwoman Bajer still needs to recuse herself. She's clearly evidenced an opinion on matters involving the chief and Detective Sergeant Sullivan already. The second MRI report involved that. And in addition, she was very involved in the SAU case. She inserted herself, I don't know, as a witness or an investigator, text messaging with the subject, with the suspect in the case, and... That would be nice. Thank you. Thank you. It's nice to be included. Had to happen eventually. So, do you want me to repeat everything I said? Or... Okay. So Chairmanwoman Bajer, I believe that you need to recuse yourself this evening. You've evidence to clear bias, both against my client and also involvement and information that makes it not appropriate for you to render a decision or weigh in on this matter.
And I will talk to you in a minute. Number one, as former 14-year school board member, that is my role in the community at the youth age, as I have knowledge of the fact that the child is a warrant. Secondly, the person involved was a parent of mine, and by all intents and purposes, the parents have to be contained. There's been no discussion after. It was the item where the rest of the case. And as far as the bias of like explanation of how that comes... Do you reference the second report for MRI?
There's a second report for MRI where your entire testimony, witness testimony, has been redacted. There's no grounds, confidentiality grounds that I'm made aware of that would warrant redacting your entire witnessing.
However, I will make a motion right now. We unscrew the minutes of August 13th and August 16th. Give information. Will you turn it while I discuss it? Do we have a second?
One second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those papers.
All right.
Minutes run sealed. Most happy to turn them over to Chief.
And when will I have a chance to see them?
I can have them tomorrow.
Okay, we're going to have to adjourn to another hearing date then. And are these minutes...
The minutes will also be going up on the...
And the minutes are essentially your witness interview for the MRI investigation?
Yes, in regards directly to what was written in the MRI report.
But is it the same content, or is it different content?
It's in regards to the discussion that's in place on August 13th between September and October.
So the minutes don't word-for-word provide the information that was in the MRI interview report, correct?
It's in regards to August 13th.
Can you please answer my question directly? Do the minutes replicate what was in the MRI report?
And I was questioned by the investigator as to what's right. That would be in the MRI report.
Have you read the unredacted MRI report that I'm referring to? Do you know if the words that are written in the MRI report that are redacted are reflected word-for-word in the minutes?
I would say not verbatim.
Do you know if the words written in the MRI report are substantially the same as what's written in the minutes?
It was questioned as to what's right.
And I'm sorry, who made this right against you? And you're going to sit here and tell us that you don't have a bias against Sergeant Sullivan, but he made the right against you?
It was in the... I'm impressionable. I had no bias against him whatsoever.
Oh, okay.
But again, you can't insist that I recused myself. It's my...
No, you're right. I can just win the case. I will renew my objection to Chairmanwoman Bajer participating in this hearing. It's clear that she has a bias, just in her tone and presentation, but also no court will find it possible that you could sit here and say that someone threatened you, but you're not biased against them. Chief? If I could go back to what you were, when you were first talking, you walked us through some of the documents that are created in the process. And you said, you mentioned a bunch of reports, and I'm curious, is there a protocol for when those reports are used that you didn't touch on? Like, is there a limit to reports, or a reason why you wouldn't want to have all of those reports in a case?
I don't understand your question.
Well, you mentioned a number of reports in your opening discussion, correct?
Again, I don't understand your question.
Did you mention a number of different reports in your opening discussion?
Offense reports and calls for service reports, is that what you were referring to?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Are there specific rules that determine when those types of reports are used or not used?
Again, I don't know what you're asking specifically.
Does the department have any rules, regulations, or protocols that determine when those particular reports are used or not used?
Used for what?
When those reports are generated. Does the department have any...
Yes. So when a call comes in, a call for service, a CFS number is generated.
Okay. And what about the offense report?
The offense report is when the call actually turns into an investigation and not just a simple call, say, a motor vehicle lockout, for example.
And you also mentioned supplemental report?
Supplemental report would be within the offense report. It's just an additional report that's attached to that offense report.
And when does that get used?
That gets used when the officer has done follow-up investigations and needs to add additional information to that offense report.
Are there any other reports that I missed?
Not that we discussed.
And is there any rule of procedure or policy that would limit when you could, when or the number of additional reports you can use as supplements?
Say that again?
Are there any rules or policies that limit the number of supplemental reports you can have in a case?
No. No.
I'm going to go probably in order. So the first document I'd like to look at is Sergeant Base Number of One. And you mentioned two dates where you found labels, is that correct?
Two dates?
Yes, that's what I thought I heard. You mentioned two separate instances where labels were discovered?
Yes.
And what were those dates?
5/28 and 5/28.
They were both on the same day?
Yes. Is that what you're referring to?
No, I'm sorry. Maybe I'm not giving you the right context. The labels that you said you discovered that prompted you to start looking into things?
Yes. Okay. Yes, there were two different dates.
And what were those dates?
I believe one was the 14th of March, and the other one was the 17th of March.
And this first violation for case number 1997-OS, do you recall which date you discovered a label for this case?
It would have been on the 14th or the 15th of March, we discovered the label for that.
So is that a third date you just gave me?
Excuse me?
Is that a third date? I thought you said it was March 14th and March 17th.
He did his report on the 14th, and I believe that was a Monday, or the following day would have been a Monday. I have to check to be specific. It was the day that he typed out "report." He was working midnights. I came in the following day and found those in the trash, which would have been March 15th. I came in in the morning.
You found them in the morning of March 15th?
Correct.
And you said you went and reviewed the video of the location of the trash, is that correct?
No, I reviewed video of the administrative office where the labels are printed up from.
And what did that video reveal?
That video showed Sullivan printing up a bunch of labels and removing them from the printer.
Was there video that showed Sergeant Sullivan putting labels in the trash can?
No.
And these labels that they were referring to on March 15th, these were the ones that you said were on the top of the trash can, I believe? Is that correct?
Correct.
What were the labels, more specifically? Were they a certain category of labels?
They, it was an incident where we had a juvenile commit suicide, and a bunch of property was taken from the crime scene, and so these were property labels.
On this first page, on this first page in the second paragraph, you state, "It was recently discovered that you never did a report regarding this investigation until March 14th, 2021, at which time you completed three separate narratives 23 months after the incident."
Correct.
What is the inference with your point that you're trying to make with the three separate narratives? Is that problematic?
Yes, it is problematic.
Why was it problematic?
Well, it's problematic in the first place, he didn't complete a report for this important investigation, and then completing additional reports. And if you look at the coroner's report or the medical examiner's report, and you compare it to Sergeant Sullivan's report, very similar, almost like mirror image.
Why is it, is it problematic specifically that there are three separate reports?
It's problematic that he didn't complete them in a timely fashion.
So your reference to three additional reports was meaningless? That's not a problem?
No. It's a problem that he never did a report to begin with.
If you look at the reports that are attached, or not attached, but I haven't touched them, but are following this particular violation, the reports are actually all different events. Is that correct?
They're follow-up reports. There are supplemental narratives. If you look at the title at the top, it says supplemental narrative. So that would have been a report or a follow-up that he had done, which he never completed until March 14th.
So because they were supplemental narratives, and you're referring to the last two, right? Because the fourth one, the fourth one is not a supplemental, it just says narrative. Does that mean that it was entirely appropriate for them to be separate reports?
The last one's a supplemental narrative. Is that what you're talking about? Page nine? Please give me the page you're referring to.
Seven is a supplemental narrative. It's continued on page eight, and page nine is a supplemental narrative.
No, that's a separate, that's right, correct. So page eight, page nine is a supplemental narrative.
And isn't it correct, then, that that's the proper procedure for Detective Sergeant Sullivan or any officer to have completed these as separate narratives?
It's not a proper procedure to do the narrative for something that happened in April of 2019, to do the report 23 months later. No, it's not proper.
So what is the proper procedure?
To do the report at the time of the incident.
What does that mean, at the time of the incident?
Within a day or two of the incident, you should be doing a report, any follow-ups, and you should be adding those follow-ups to the case file, so that the supervisor, such as myself, can go in, look at, see what's being done on these files.
At the time of this incident in April of 2019, do you, what was Sergeant Sullivan's schedule like when he was working?
I don't have that in front of me.
Was Sergeant Sullivan assigned to patrol shifts in April 2019?
He was, yes.
And is that generally what happens with detective sergeants? Are they assigned to patrol shifts, or are they supposed to be doing detective work?
In a department our size, you do both. And I give, I gave Sergeant Sullivan lots of leeway to do what he needed, when he needed to do it.
Distract me with that leeway. What do you mean by that?
So this is a particularly important case, and I can go over some other cases we can talk about later. When we had major cases, for instance, the man found out in the woods and some of these other cases, if I felt it needed follow-up, and these, and I consider these major cases for Bonstead, I even dropped another sergeant that I had. I would drop him down to cover Sergeant Sullivan's shift, and I told Sergeant Sullivan, "You need to run with this case. Do whatever you need to do to complete it and to follow up. Let's close these cases and do what we need to do." So he had a lot of leeway. I gave him a lot of latitude to do whatever he needed to do.
So is it your testimony on April 2nd, 2019, you dropped another sergeant off at a location to relieve Detective Sergeant Sullivan so that he could investigate this case?
No, I'm not saying for this particular case. I don't recall. I don't have his schedule or what we, for that particular day.
Can you remember any specific cases where you did that?
That I dropped Sergeant Sullivan. If there was any major case, I can tell you this was one of them, the SAU case. We did that. We did that for the body that was found out in the woods. Any major case, I gave him a lot of leeway and told him, and he could adjust his schedule, do whatever we needed to do to get it done, and we would fill his position in patrol.
And are there department records that reflect this?
There are probably, there could be timesheets.
And how would timesheets reflect that you're dropping someone off to relieve Detective Sergeant Sullivan?
We could see double coverage. And again, I was working days, he was mainly working days. So if he needed to run with the case, I was here to handle the calls and do whatever, take care of the town while he needed to do his detective work.
So you said that this was a major case, so you were aware of this case on April 2nd, 2019, correct?
I am.
And yet, you didn't follow up on this case again until March 14th, or April 9th, actually, of 2021? Or I'm sorry, March 15th, is what you said. And then you wrote the report on April 9th, 2021.
Say that again?
So you said, you just testified that you were aware of this case on April 2nd of 2019, and I'm asking that you didn't follow up again on this case, even though it was a major case, until you saw the labels on March 14th or 15th, 2021?
So I had asked Sergeant Sullivan on a lot of these major cases, I was asking him for information, for follow-up, and it was always, "I'm working on it. I'm doing this. I'm doing that." I put a lot of trust into him and, you know, thought he was going to do the right thing. We would have department meetings. He would, you know, brief me on things, but apparently, he wasn't doing the reports.
So who are the witnesses that can testify to the fact that you were... So who are the witnesses that can testify to the fact that you were asking Sergeant Sullivan about this case or other of these major cases at these meetings?
Again, we had, we were having meetings mostly almost daily. Whoever was there. Sometimes it was just him and I. Other times, it was my administrative assistant. Other times, it might have been a patrolman or someone else who was, who was there. I can't tell you specifically.
Isn't it true, Chief, that you didn't actually start any meetings until after you returned from your suspension and, and, sorry, I'm going to forget the date. But I think it was in November of 2020?
No, that's not true.
And do you have evidence that supports your assertion that you were having these meetings almost daily prior to your suspension?
I'm not sure what kind of evidence you're looking for.
I don't know. That would be my next question. What form is that evidence in?
I mean, I was keeping, I would keep notes, but I don't have any notes with me. Do I have notes regarding this specific date? Probably not. A lot of times, I have my notes when I'm done with the meeting.
Why would you destroy your notes when you're done with the meeting?
If I don't need the notes anymore, if my questions have been answered. I also kept a lot of memos and notes on a thumb drive, particularly when it became, involved major cases like this. And that thumb drive disappeared from my office.
Why would you keep memos and notes for major cases on a thumb drive and not put them in the system if that's what you're criticizing Sergeant Sullivan for?
I, no. I kept notes and memos on a thumb drive that I needed, that would remind me. I could always go back and look at it and remind me to speak to Sergeant Sullivan about a particular event or a particular case.
And how did they get on the thumb drive? Where did you create the notes?
I created them on my personal laptop.
And is it your testimony that you also deleted these files from your personal laptop?
They were on a thumb drive. They were never created and saved on a laptop.
You created them on your personal laptop and you saved them directly to a thumb drive?
Correct.
And where were you when you created them?
I'm in my office.
Would there be department video that shows you doing them?
No, it was in my office.
Would there be department video that shows these morning meetings? These near daily meetings during the morning?
There's probably some video, yes. I'm not sure how far back it'll go. But there's some video of probably my office at particular times of the morning for these meetings.
You said that attendance at the meeting varies. Do you identify specific people who, that you recall being at meetings at any time?
Sergeants, all of my staff. All of my staff have been in my, my office at one time or another for department meetings.
You refer to this case as a major case, but also as a suicide. What makes it a major case?
Well, it's a large case. I mean, considering it involved a juvenile that committed suicide. I mean, that's an important case to me. More important than somebody's mailbox being knocked down, I would say.
Isn't it true that you were also at the scene of this suicide, Chief?
Yes, it was.
Did you complete a report?
I completed a report on a thumb drive that's missing.
Chief, isn't that a violation of policies and procedures to complete a report on a thumb drive and not put it in the IMC system?
It is not. Because the thumb drive, as I mentioned, was always a reminder for me, particularly on major cases, that I knew what cases were outstanding. And I could always refer to the thumb drive, those files. And I was asking Sergeant Sullivan for these files. And cases, each major cases or large cases came in. I could take the file, go to my thumb drive, upload the report into IMC. It was always a reminder for me.
Why were you asking Sergeant Sullivan for these files?
Because he was the case investigator. He was, he was the one in charge of this investigation.
So you're aware that Sergeant Sullivan had the files for this case?
Yes, he was, he was the one that had the case file.
And why did he have the case file? Because he was continuing to work on the case?
On this particular case, yes. But he had not done any work.
What kind of work should Sergeant Sullivan have been doing, certainly after the report from the medical examiner came in?
After the report?
Yes.
Well, he should have done his reports. He should have done all of his reports in any supplementals, whether it was if he needed to do interviews, whatever he needed to do. As a detective sergeant, he should have been doing.
And you're not aware of what he needed to do?
Am I aware what he needed? Of course, I'm aware of what he needed to do.
Okay, so can you answer my question more specifically, please? What did he need to do after the medical examiner report came in that he didn't do?
He needed to close the case out and send it up through the chain of command so that I could review it and approve it and send back to him if it needed additional follow-up or close it out.
And is it your testimony to say then that you weren't aware that the medical examiner report had come in and that there was no other work to be done other than closing the case and finishing the reports?
That's correct.
So when did you first become aware that the medical examiner report had come in and there was no remaining work to be done on this case?
I don't recall when I exactly, I, the date.
Can you give me an approximate timeframe?
I don't remember. We're talking two years ago.
Was it before or after you found the labels?
I don't, well, I, I don't remember. I don't remember.
So it's possible then that you were actually aware that this case was essentially closed and the work was complete before you found the labels?
It couldn't have been closed because the reports weren't done. They weren't submitted. They weren't even in the file until March of fourteen.
That's why I said essentially closed. But take the second half. Is it possible then that you were aware before you found the labels that all of the work, other than the reports, had been completed on this case?
Well, the reports are the work. So the work wasn't done.
So Chief, are you telling me that all of the reports in the office get finished within a day or two of the incident?
No, not all of the reports, no.
What percentage?
Well, they also don't take two years to do. I can't give you a percentage. I don't have that number.
What was the date that you discovered your thumb drive missing? That was November of 2020, right?
Correct.
So what prevented you from filing your report on the IMC between April 2nd of 2019 and November, well, let's say August of 2020, when you were on suspension?
Again, I'm waiting for these major cases that Sergeant Sullivan has to send up to the chain of command so that, again, I can complete the report, close everything out.
So for you, it's appropriate to hold your report from the incident date of April 2nd, 2019. But for your officers, it's not appropriate? Is that what I'm understanding?
And on this particular report, again, I was at this scene for a very short time. I spoke to the parent of this, of this child. And I was not, I was not investigating this particular incident. This particular incident was being investigated by my detective sergeant, who was in charge of the investigation. I wasn't there investigating. So my report was very brief.
That's not what my question was, Chief. You've already testified that you had done a report, that you were at the scene and should have provided a report, but you prevented from putting it in the system because it was on a thumb drive that went missing. My question very clearly is, is it your testimony then that it's okay for you to hold your report from April 2nd of 2019 until August of 2020, when you're put on administrative leave? But the policies in the office are that it's not acceptable for your officers to do that?
No, I can't do a report until I get the files with the major case investigator with all the information from everybody. I need to do my, my report's done. But I can't upload everything until I get all the files.
So your testimony is that you weren't supposed to do a report for being at the scene? Is that correct?
I didn't say I didn't do a full investigative report. That was the detective sergeant's. Again, I was there for a very brief time, spoke to the parent, gave them, with the parent, my condolences, and I let my investigator handle the scene.
Chief, can you please answer my question directly? Was it or was it not proper procedure for you as an officer who had been at the scene and talked to people at the scene to have completed a report and put it in the IMC?
And I did. I told you, I did a report and I told you what my procedure was.
You didn't. You told me that it was on a thumb drive and submitted on that. So is your answer, yes, it was appropriate? You should have done a report from that day?
And I did do a report. And I told you what my procedure was.
And what is the explanation for why you were exempted from this very important policy you've been telling us about tonight to immediately put reports between 12 and 24 hours onto the IMC?
Again, I'm not the case investigator. I hired him as a detective sergeant to investigate these incidents. My, my report would have been, again, a very vague report, responding to the scene, spoke to the parent. And, you know, again, once I reviewed the whole file, I kept that on a thumb drive so that we could upload, so that it would give me a reminder to go in and upload my, my, my report once I received the case file from the sergeant.
So was it neglect of your duty, Chief, to fail to file the report for this April 2nd, 2019 incident prior to August of 2020?
There's no neglect. And I answered your question.
So your testimony is that the department rules and regulations don't apply equally to you as they do to your officers?
No, that's not, that's not my testimony. And that's not what I said. I answered your question. Move on.
I don't think you dare. And I can decide when I want to move on. Thank you. Was this an incident that required police attention?
Yes.
Would it have fallen within your duties to create a report?
I did.
So then you would agree that when Detective Sergeant Sullivan has created reports, but just not put them in the ICM or has all the information necessary for his reports as part of his investigative file, but just not put them in the IMC system, that he has not neglected his duty?
Say that again?
I said you would agree then that if Sergeant Sullivan had done the work to create his reports and just had the information someplace else, some other location, but hadn't put them in the IMC, that he has not, in fact, neglected his duty?
No, he has. Because his, his duty is to do the report, send it up to, send it through IMC, the IMC system. We have a tracking system. Send it through IMC system, send it up to the chain of command so that it can be approved or sent back to him so that it can be, a follow-ups can be, can be done.
You have examples of cases where, prior to the thumb drive being missing, you uploaded reports late to the IMC?
Do I have examples?
Yeah.
I've done it. I can't give you any specific cases off the top of my head.
Are there cases where you have never uploaded your report to the IMC?
I can't think of any off the top of my head. You mean from, I guess I need clarification from you.
Take a look at the next complaint that starts at case number 10. This was a complaint about an investigation of a fatal overdose, or suspected fatal overdose. Is that correct?
Correct.
And part of your allegation is that Sergeant, Detective Sergeant Sullivan failed to do any follow-up investigations for this case, correct?
Correct.
What follow-up investigations did he have done for a fatal overdose?
Well, there were, and again, we can, I can read page, page, each page if you want. But there was some information in here where there were some witnesses that needed to be interviewed to find out where these drugs came from. There was, I believe there was some physical evidence on scene that could have been processed, including a cellphone. He's a detective. He should be interviewing people, witnesses, victims. He didn't do that in this case.
Doesn't, um...
In fact, he never completed a report for this case.
Was page 12, the 13, to indicate there was physical evidence processed for this case?
Yeah. Page 12. Page 13, there's physical evidence, including a Motorola cellphone.
I'm sorry, did I miss you? Because I think you just said that he failed to process the evidence for the case.
Correct. So what I'm saying is cellphone. He didn't ask for records. Didn't do anything with the cellphone other than retrieving it. He didn't interview some people that were at the scene. There was a lot of things he could have done that he didn't, that he failed to do.
Why, why do you think he failed to do it? If it was entered into the system, it looks like it was entered on that date, the date of the incident, April 17th, 2019. Why is it, why is it a failure?
The failure is not following up, subpoenaing the phone records, downloading the, you know, dumping the phone to see if there's any activity, drug activity, or to identify any suspects that might have given this fatal overdose to the victim. That's what detectives do.
So you were retracting your statement when you said that you failed to enter the phone?
I didn't say, no, I didn't say failed to enter.
I'm pretty sure you did. If you, if you said he failed to enter the information into the system, would you be retracting that statement now?
I didn't say that.
That's why I posed it as a hypothetical, Chief. If you said that, would you now correct that statement to say that that would not be true?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
If you, if you said that he failed to enter the evidence into the system, would you now correct that statement to indicate that that's not accurate?
Correct. But I don't know that he's the one that even entered this evidence. When I'm referring about the evidence, I explained to you just now about the cellphone. There were, you know, there were items found. No fingerprints were taken off of any of the items. Again, something detectives do. Again, these reports weren't completed until March 14th. All the reports that he did, again, and that was...
Can I make a comment? First, page 17, last paragraph, narrative for patrol and garage, that's correct. He then put the cellphone to the office. He then took the cellphone to the office.
Yep, correct.
Isn't it true, Chief, that you actually knew the director took the phone?
I know now.
Isn't it true that you knew in April of 2019 that the director took the phone?
No, I don't recall that.
You just said that Detective Sergeant Sullivan never did a report. But on pages 22 and 23, there is a report from Detective Sergeant Sullivan, correct?
I said he didn't do a report until March 14th, 2021.
Initially, you said he didn't do a report. So we're in agreement, though, that there is a report here.
He did a report 14 months later.
You just mentioned fingerprints. Is it the department's policy to fingerprint in cases of fatal overdoses?
Well, there's an overdose task force, if you're not aware of it, run by the Attorney General's Office. And they're looking for as much information they can find to connect the dots when it comes to fatal overdoses. And if that means taking fingerprints, then, you know, we should be doing that. If we can identify suspects and get some of these dangerous drugs off the street.
So are you referring to taking the fingerprints of the deceased? Or are you referring to something else with fingerprints?
I'm referring to fingerprints off of the objects or the evidence that's found at the scene.
And by obviously, I mean things like the needle that were used, things like that?
Baggies, whatever evidence found at the scene. The cellphone, I mean...
So if your position that Detective Sergeant Sullivan should have fingerprinted the victim's cellphone for looking for evidence of potential drug dealers?
I'm saying he should have fingerprinted the items that were found at the scene. Plastic pill container, plastic baggie. And we had somebody die.
You mentioned the task force. Are there written guidance from them on that?
I believe there was an AG's memo put out. And I'm not sure what type of guidance, but I know that there is in AG's fatal overdose task force.
Well, I've been a victim of a crime and it's pretty difficult to get police officers usually to do fingerprints. Wouldn't you agree?
No.
So is your position that on every case, you take fingerprints when possible? Is that accurate?
No, not everything. That's not accurate.
So how do we know when fingerprints are necessary and when they're not?
Again, a major case, something like this, where we have a victim, victim of a crime or a victim deceased, I think that's pretty significant time we should be taking fingerprints.
What's your definition of a major case? Just so I can understand.
Well, a dead body would be a major case, particularly if it's a suspicious death or an overdose. The SAU case, like we talked about earlier, a major felony case, those would be a major cases. Sexual assaults.
Please take a look at the next complaint which starts on, or the next warning, sorry, starts on page number 24. You say in this warning, as Detective Sergeant, you were assigned the case to investigate and you were instructed from that five interviews to further the investigation. Do you recall who the subjects of those five interviews were?
No, I don't, not off the top of my head. I don't recall all the names.
The next line says, "You conducted these interviews with the assistance of the forensic investigator, but you never completed your investigative reports in IMC, although you were instructed to do so on multiple occasions."
Correct.
So is your testimony that there is, there's no entries in the IMC related to these interviews?
Yes, there's just one report in IMC.
So this one report here is the entire content of the IMC related to this case?
Yes.
Did anyone...
Other than Officer Detective and Canasio's reports.
Did you complete any reports about this case?
No.
Why not?
Again, I wasn't the investigator investigating this case.
So a review of the IMC for this case will not reveal any investigative reports for interviews completed by Detective Sergeant Sullivan. Is that correct?
Correct.
It says in here that you instructed him to complete those reports on multiple occasions. What method or means did you use to instruct him to do that?
I verbally told him and I believe I have some emails requesting him to do the reports as well. I'm pretty certain I have some emails regarding that.
And you never received any reports from Detective Sergeant Sullivan to review?
No, I got one report from Detective Sergeant Sullivan.
You just, in the last sentence of paragraph two, you say the investigation over, I think it's a year. Blurred out. And a half old, had to be reassigned to a new detective to complete. Is that accurate?
Correct.
So for a year and a half, this case sat unattended to even though you've described it as a major case?
Wasn't unattended to. The case was still being worked on as well by the forensic examiner. We were waiting on his report as well. But the case did sit stagnant with Sergeant Sullivan for some time, even after we got the report. And I'm certain that I have emails relating to my telling him to complete his reports.
I'm going to ask you to produce those to me, please.
Excuse me?
When did you receive the report that you were waiting on from the forensic investigator?
I don't have the date with me.
And what happened after you received that report?
It was shared with Sergeant Sullivan.
And what happened then?
He was told to complete the interviews with the individuals that we needed to speak to.
So it's your testimony that you were waiting on the report, you received the report, and then Sergeant Sullivan was told to complete the interviews, but he did not complete them?
Right. Excuse me?
I'm going to, I'm going to correct that because I misspoke for you. You were waiting on the reports, the report from forensic investigator. You got the report. You gave it to Sergeant Sullivan and told him to complete the interviews. He completed them, but never entered the interview, the reports from those interviews.
Correct. Well, he did one, he did one report. Page 25. The report I've seen from Sergeant Sullivan.
It says on the second sentence of paragraph two, "You conducted these interviews with the assistance of the forensic investigator."
Yep. Correct.
So how could he have first been doing the interviews after the forensic investigator's report was received?
The final report. The final report from the forensic. We got the, we got the forensic report back. But he also, he did, I believe it was five interviews with the forensic examiner. And I believe it was after we got that report back that he did these interviews. I'd have to check the dates, but I believe it was after that.
So what was your, I could be confused with the word final. So excuse me, what was the, what was the report about from the forensic investigator?
It was, it was about the, it was about the theft from the SA, from the town.
Did it include witness interviews?
Excuse me?
Did it include witness interviews?
No, it included how the thefts occurred.
If you take a look at the next warning, please, on, starting on page 26. And this is another suicide, is that correct?
Yes.
And again, we have the allegation that Detective Sergeant Sullivan never completed, never did any follow-up investigations for this case. What follow-up investigations was he supposed to do?
Well, he never, he never did a report to begin with. And any follow-up investigation would be, you know, speaking to the next akin, getting information perhaps about the firearm. But more importantly, really, in this particular case, doing a report.
Were there any other reports completed for this case?
Yes, his trainee, who was in the field training at the time, did a report.
Is that it?
That's it.
So on page 29, it indicates that Sergeant Bentoncourt was also there. Did he have done a report for this case?
Yes, he should have. He may have. I'll have to go back and check. Wait. What page is that?
Page 29.
And it says Sergeant Bentoncourt?
Yeah, the last paragraph refers to both of them being there.
Sergeant Sullivan, Sergeant Bentoncourt cleared the firearm chamber and seized it for evidence. Yes, I'll have to check, but he should have done a report. It may not just be included in this stack. I'm not sure.
If you look on page 27, towards the top.
So let me just bring your attention back to this report. So it says they seized the firearm, yet...
I'm in charge here.
Yet there's no...
I know you're not used to that, but I get to ask the question. If you could look on page 27, please, near the top?
Yep.
It says, "Reporting Officer..." I don't want to, I don't want to mess with her name, but Officer G...
Officer Geely, yeah.
Geely, thank you. Assisting Officer James Sullivan and then approving Officer James Sullivan.
Right.
And there's a signature. What does assisting officer mean?
He was just the other officer that was there.
And whose signatures are those?
Those are Sergeant Sullivan's.
So is it fair to say that this is a joint report here between Officer Geely and James Sullivan?
I wouldn't say it's a joint report. I've never used that term before. I say it's a report that was done by Officer Geely, a trainee at the time. Not to, not to say anything bad about her report, but you could tell that she was new at the time. And quite frankly, a lot of the stuff that's in here should have really been written the way it's been written in Sergeant Sullivan's on that.
And can you give us an example of what you're referring to?
Well, she refers to a lot of stuff in here that Sergeant Sullivan did. Immediately after Sergeant Sullivan notified Bellknap County. Sergeant Sullivan, you know, conducted a welfare check. Just a lot of stuff in here. She's referring to stuff that Sergeant Sullivan did and not particularly the way you should write reports, noting stuff that you did.
Well, she doesn't that support the idea that this is actually a joint report?
Again, I've never heard the term joint report. And I also noted, as I started to say earlier, a firearm was seized, but yet it's not noted in the evidence in the property of this report. Sergeant Sullivan should have caught that as a supervisor.
However, you indicated that it's possible that Officer Bentoncourt did a report, correct?
It's possible.
So is it possible that Officer Bentoncourt has the, his report has the evidence of the firearm?
No, because it would be on the face sheet, this first page on 27, or it would be attached to the next page. And it's not. So I don't believe at this time, looking at what we have in front of us, that there is a firearm that was noted as evidence and that would be important.
How do we, how do we know if there's more than one page? This first page, it just says page one, incident report.
Right. So I think if there was a second page, it would say page two, incident report.
Well, it's not here. How do I know that it doesn't exist? Is there a way to tell from looking at this? Because there isn't a page two?
No, this is how it's set up in IMC. It wouldn't, the next page would just say page two, just like the narrative report. If you look at page 28 and 29, it says page one, page two. That's how the face sheet, I call it, the initial incident report sheet would be set up. It would say page one, page two.
So that, but there's no way for us to tell from looking at this whether or not this is a complete report or if there is another page somewhere?
We could always check and go into IMC and find out that way.
Where is the firearm from this incident?
I don't know.
Have you looked?
I have not.
So is it your testimony today that you've known about this since April 9th of 2021? Have noted that there was a missing firearm and haven't investigated?
No, it's my testimony today that I just noticed that in his narrative, that there's a firearm that was used and it's not noted on the, on this report, whether it's noted in IMC or elsewhere, I don't know. I can't tell by looking at this report.
Well, Chief, I'm confused because I think this is what you referred to as a major case. major case, you told us how you have meetings to go over these major cases, how could it have slipped from your view that there was a firearm here and it's unaccounted for?
Okay, I'm not saying it's unaccounted for, or where it is, or I can't tell you at this moment, again, this is a 2019 case, whether the firearm was given back to a relative, I, I don't know, i- if, if it was, the sergeant should have did another narrative, supplemental narrative saying, on such and such a date, this firearm was given back to the deceased next-akin or relative, but there's no narrative to indicate that for me.
In preparing this written warning, did you review all of the information in the IMC related to this case?
Excuse me?
In preparing this written warning, did you review all of the information in the IMC related to this case?
Yes.
And do you recall seeing anything about a firearm in there?
I don't recall sitting here at this time, at this moment, you could see there's a lot of stuff that would have reviewed, I don't recall specifically, but I do recall there was a firearm used.
I'm sorry, I don't understand your answer, it seems like you said two different things.
What was your question again?
Do you recall that there was a firearm in this case?
I recall there was a firearm used to commit suicide in this case, yes.
But you don't know where that firearm was?
I do not.
And when did you become aware that you didn't know where the firearm was in this case?
I haven't, I haven't looked into it, again, I prepared, as you can see, 27 or so reports, looking at this, again, if there was a, there was a firearm used, I'm certain of that, I've seen the video, the body worn camera video, if the firearm, and I'm certain it was taken, seized from the home, if it was, if it was given back, there should have been a report done by the sergeant indicating that, and there's none that I can see in this report.
How do you know it should have been done by Detective Sergeant Sullivan and not by Sergeant Bentoncourt?
It should have been done, whoever gave it back, whether it was an evidence officer, whether it was Sergeant Sullivan, but I would think Sergeant Sullivan, being the detective sergeant, being a supervisor, would have known about it, would have done a report or a notation on it.
I'd like to request all of the records in the IMC related to the matter, please. Chief, isn't it true that you went on a call to this residence where this incident happened?
That's correct, that's correct, days before.
Days before, what happened then?
We spoke to the subject, we spoke to the subject's employer, the subject had, had denied making any sort of threats, and he allowed us to search the home, we searched the living room, the kitchen area, could not find any firearms, he made a compelling argument that, you know, he was just going through some difficult times, and there was not much from that point that we could do.
So is that under a different OF number?
Yeah, that would be a different OF number, that would be a welfare check.
And did you write a report for that one?
I don't recall.
So did you have written a report for that one?
Again, that was just a welfare check, there would have probably only been a call for service, it wasn't an offense report, so it wasn't an investigation, I would not have done a report, it would have been just the, the officer that responded with us to that call.
And even in this situation where a few days later there ends up being a suicide, you wouldn't have then done a report related to that welfare check?
No, because it was two separate incidents.
Take a look at the next warning, please, starting at page number 30. Why aren't the reports and questions attached to this warning?
Okay, so this was the, the death, the dead body found out in the woods. The, the reports are not attached to this, because at the time that this was being prepared, it was being investigated by the Major Crime Unit of New Hampshire State Police.
And what were they investigating?
The cause of death, the manner of how the individual ended up out in the woods.
So a year later, the cause of death hadn't still not been determined?
Again, I'm not going to discuss this case any further with you at this time.
Isn't it true, Chief, that the cause of death here was hypothermia?
That was the cause of death noted on the ME report, but there's additional information that's come in since, since this case was investigated by Sergeant Sullivan.
Sergeant Popper, I'm going to request that I get all the information relevant to this, as being cited as a warning, as an incidentary issue, and there's extensive evidence that's missing, that I believe would discredit the chief's allegations.
And what specifically are you looking for?
All the information.
All the information.
He's citing 10 additional reports, which sounds like a lot of follow-up investigation to me.
I think the 10 additional reports are in here that your client did, aren't they?
Are they attached to the next one?
Hold on. Be happy to make your copies right now for him.
Now, I'll take a three, three steps, even though they're copies, but this is bad.
We are.
I'll take a count of your steps.
We will also be putting aside my authority as Hockstein's head of line. But the doctor, Dr. [inaudible 00:01:49].
Thank you. Chief, you mentioned earlier about when you're in a small department, it is standard to be detective and also work patrol and be out on the street. Is that accurate, reflection of what you said?
Yes.
Were there specific times of Detective Sergeant Sullivan's shift that were set aside for him to do his investigative work?
All right. He was never that busy where he couldn't do investigative work. And he could have simply come to me at any time if he wanted to work on a particular case or whatever he needed to do, I would have allowed him to do it.
So is it your testimony that Detective Sergeant Sullivan never came to you and told you that he needed more time to complete his investigative work?
That is my testimony, yes.
Did Detective Sergeant Sullivan ever speak with you about case files that he had in his office for investigations that he felt he needed to work on?
There were times we spoke and I inquired about cases, particularly major cases, and he was telling me that he needed to work on it. He was doing follow-up or he was doing this, that, meeting with people. And some of them not major cases, some of them just misdemeanor charges and things like that.
Oh, I'm sorry. So he did come to you, so you were aware that he had cases in his office that he was working on?
So if we had a staff meeting, I would inquire, I would, I would keep a list of any cases that I think needed follow-up on or I wanted to keep track of, and I would inquire at staff meeting on particular cases. And it's not uncommon for officers to have two, three, four cases that they're working on at a time. But it is very uncommon for officers to wait a year or two to do their reports.
So all the cases that you've spoken about tonight, none of these were on your list that you got?
Well, some of them were on my, were on the list, yes. Some of them were not. I can't give you specific dates, times.
For those that were on your list, how is it that you didn't know that these extensive periods of time had gone by and reports weren't completed?
On some of them, I would inquire from Sergeant Sullivan, almost on a daily basis on, on these things. And again, he would, he would, you know, put it off. Or there were times when I wanted to meet with him to discuss cases, and he always came up with an excuse that he had to go, or I'm taking care of it, or I had to go do this, or I had to go do that. There have been times I had to really kind of like really nail him down and say, no, come on in the office, let's talk about these things.
Where did he happen at?
He said he had appointments. I can't give you specific times, but there were many times he said he had an interview to go do, or he said he had to go, you know, meet someone or he had, he had a call to go on. In fact, he would do that quite often when I wanted to meet with him, oh, I gotta go on a call. And that's one of the reasons I put out the general order, which I'm not sure if we're going to talk about that, but there was a general order that was put out. Oftentimes, you know, he would leave the station or he would get a call over the radio and pick up the, the phone and call, call dispatch, and then he would be gone in a flash. And that's why part of the general order, if we discussed that, I told him, I told everybody that they need to answer the radio, answer over the radio so that I'm aware of what's going on, what calls they're going on to, for safety reasons, for one, one thing. And I also wanted to know what was going on.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, Detective Sergeant Sullivan was taking calls that he wasn't assigned to and that you weren't aware of?
Not that he wasn't assigned to, he was being dispatched to.
So if he was just being dispatched to those calls, shouldn't he have taken them?
Right. He should have taken them.
Wow. Where was the problem? I'm not understanding what you're indicating is the problem there.
Well, we were just talking about him notifying me of cases and things of that nature, and me trying to get him to meet with me to discuss case files and investigations. And my response to you was oftentimes, I tried doing that. I tried getting him to sit down in the office so we could discuss cases, or even at staff meetings. And we would talk about cases at staff meetings. But my point was oftentimes, when I asked him to discuss cases, let's go over this case or that case, he always seemed to have an urgent, an urgency to go somewhere, do something.
Things that were part of his job to do, correct?
What's that?
Things that were part of his job to do, correct?
I guess. I don't know what he was doing all his, all his time. I wasn't micromanaging him.
I thought, I thought you just said that part of the general order, the purpose was so that you would know.
Right. So let me give you an example. A call comes in over the radio, he's sitting in his office, I'm sitting in my office or another part of the building. Rather than him answering dispatch over the radio, he would pick up the telephone and communicate so that nobody else in the station knew the call he was going on and all the reason Belknap County Sheriff's Department was calling us. And then all of a sudden, he'd get in his Cruises, take off and, and go do whatever he was doing. Now, whether he did a report on that, I don't know.
And was he the only officer that did this?
He was the one I noticed to do it, that did it frequently. I really didn't know, notice others doing it unless, you know, there was a dead spot in a building or there was a problem with, with the portable radios. So I, I noted in my general order that unless it's a of confidential nature, or if there's a problem with reception, I wanted everybody to communicate via the portable radio or the base station, which we have in the ELC at the police station. So that not only I could hear what was going on, but any other officers that were working could hear the call going out and knew what, what he was responding to.
Wasn't there an issue with the office in his radio working proper, the office in his radio, the radio in his office working properly?
He doesn't have a radio in his office. He has a portable radio. So there are dead spots. But again, it's, it's, if he gets a call, he simply could have, sitting in his chair and it's a dead spot, he simply could have walked into the hall. Better yet, by the station and communicated that way. That's always the best way because we get the best reception talking dispatch with the base radio because it's a, it's a higher wattage radio.
If Detective Sergeant Sullivan didn't cover these calls, what would happen to them?
Someone else would cover them.
So how many officers did you have available when he was working to cover calls?
It all depended on the day, our staffing level.
On average, how many officers did you have available to cover those calls?
Two officers on average.
So Chief, is it your testimony that Sergeant Sullivan was taking calls that he didn't need to take, and that was causing him to not?
Oh, that's not my testimony at all.
Okay. I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand because earlier I thought you said that it's a small department, so it's expected that he would do these other things. But then I thought I heard you say, say that it's, that he had plenty of time. He never, he never didn't have enough time to get this other work done. So it seems, I'm having trouble understanding.
That's, that's correct. He never was inundated with work where he couldn't get his investigations done, period.
And how, how did you know that?
Because I work there and I run the department. And I review the logs, the daily logs from Belknap County, and I review our daily logs.
How many officers do you have assigned right now to work that was being handled by Sergeant Sullivan?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
How many officers do you currently have assigned to work that was being handled by Detective Sergeant Sullivan?
Well, Captain Cormier is, has been picking up a lot of the stuff that Sergeant Sullivan has been working on.
Wow.
Really Captain Cormier's handling it for the most part.
Have you made any other recent hires in the department?
We have.
And how many people have you hired recently?
We've hired two recently.
Two officers?
Yes.
And why did you hire two officers?
Because we were bringing our department up to staff.
So when Detective Sergeant Sullivan was working or understaffed?
Again, it all, it all depends on the timeframe we're referring to. We've had transition here at the police department. There, the officers, where there have been times where we've been fully staffed, and there have been times where we've been understaffed for one reason or another.
What, what amount of officers do you consider to be fully staffed?
We are budgeted for seven full-time officers.
Is that what you consider to be fully staffed? Is that enough to meet the needs of the department?
We have seven full-time officers, myself, as well as another part-time officer. And we are meeting the needs with the appropriations that we have.
I'm sorry, meeting the needs of what?
We are meeting the needs of the community with the staffing level that we have.
So you, you've never argued that you need more officers than that?
I argued that we needed a seventh full-time officer a couple of years ago, and it was awarded to us.
When Detective Sergeant Sullivan leaves work, is he also on call?
I'm sorry, say that again?
When Detective Sergeant Sullivan leaves work, is he then also on call?
There were times, yes, that he was on call.
So he would work a full shift and then still be on call after that, is that correct?
That's correct.
And why was that?
Well, it was because of staffing levels.
So you consider it to be adequate staffing levels to have someone work a full shift and then still need them to be on call around the clock?
We, he's not the only one that takes call. There are others that take call, or have taken call besides himself. If it were up to me, I would rather have more officers and have full coverage 24 hours. But at times, we don't have that.
How many officers would you rather have?
I'd like to have as many as the town will give me. You know, we'll do the best we can with what we have.
The town came to you and said, tell us how many officers you really think you need. What would your answer be?
I'd say, yeah.
He keeps changing his story on whether they were understaffed or overstaffed or adequately staffed.
We need seven officers.
Now we're back to being adequately staffed.
The budget is seven full-time officers, all based on what the budget, that's full-time department. The seven sixty hours is for the department.
Well, that may matter in the end result, but you agree to me that the budget doesn't actually control the amount of calls that are coming into the department?
No, the budget doesn't control that.
Does the budget allow for overtime at the end of a shift for the completion of reports?
Yes, it does.
And is that what you would instruct your officers to do, say, and work extra to complete reports?
Say, report that can wait for the next shift and not pertinent where it doesn't need to be brought to court the next day. Then I ask the officers if they can wait till their next assigned shift so that it doesn't run into overtime. But there are some instances where the report needs to get done, as well as other pertinent paperwork, and because it needs to get to the court for the next morning. And that, those are times where overtime would naturally be authorized.
And were any of the cases that you mentioned tonight, cases where news could be done, so that you get to the court the next morning?
I, you know, I would have to go through each one of these individually to, to like give you that answer.
When you were doing a review of any of these cases, did you find anywhere the delay in the report caused an issue with the prosecution of the case?
I found a lot of issues, particularly I found a lot of issues, particularly in the DCYF cases, the, the child neglect cases, um, where, yeah, it would, it may have caused a big issue. We didn't have any prosecution perhaps, because the case was never investigated properly or reports were never done.
So, how do, how is it determined who's gonna be doing the investigation, if it's gonna be done by DCYF or the police department?
I think it's actually determined by statute, and by protocol, AG protocol, where, um, when we get a call from DCYF, we're, uh, required under statute to investigate these calls.
Isn't it true that DCYF's actually required to notify the police department every time that they get a report?
That's correct. Under 167.
So, every, every DCYF report that they get, they have to notify you of, and it's, you, your position is that it's required by statute that the department then has to investigate everyone?
Yes, they investigate it, and they investigate it jointly.
Well, what does a joint investigation mean?
Means that you work, the law enforcement officer works beside or along with, together with the, uh, DCYF investigator.
The police department is expected to do an independent investigation in every DCYF referral that they receive?
On every single DCYF referral? I, we, we should be doing an investigation to determine if, uh, any abuses occurred, yes.
What, what would be in town in an investigation like that?
Interviews, uh, CAC interviews with the, at the Child Advocacy Center. Forensic interviews.
Even where it would be duplicative of the work that DCYF is doing?
Am I aware of what?
Even where it would be duplicative of the work that DCYF is doing, the department is still expected to do that for every single case?
Yes, well, we need to investigate it on a criminal, uh, end, and see if there's gonna be criminal charges.
Doesn't DCYF first have to make some kind of a determination about whether there's even reason to believe that cases occur?
Well, they, they do a law enforcement letter. They send it to us to investigate.
Is that what that letter is? Are they sending it to investigate, or are they just notifying you?
Both. Notification and to investigate.
You also receive those letters from DCYF, correct, Chief?
I do. On occasion.
Only on occasion?
Only on occasion.
What occasion is?
When they send them to me. Uh, very rarely do I get them myself. On occasion, they, they fax them, uh, they would fax them over to the police department in, in my name. I think only because at the time, might've been at the time they didn't, though, I'm not sure if Sergeant Sullivan was actually working here. I'd have to go back and check, but, um, I've gotten them. And, uh, the ones that I've gotten, I was given to Sergeant Sullivan to, uh, to follow up and investigate.
I'm gonna jump around, just a little bit, we're talking about DCYF. If you look at the, um, the violation notice that starts on page 131, please. If you look on page 136, can you tell me who that fax was addressed to?
That's faxed to me.
So did you receive this fax, Chief?
I did.
So you did know about this particular case?
Yes, and I gave it to Sergeant Sullivan, who's handling our juvenile cases to investigate.
And, uh, this has been a category of a major case?
Well, I would say, yeah, it's a case that, uh, we should be looking into.
And you didn't follow up on this case or discover even that Sergeant Sullivan hasn't done what you're saying you should've done then, almost two years later, is that correct?
Correct.
Why is that?
Well, because, as I mentioned earlier, every time that I went to Sergeant Sullivan to inquire about cases such as this, he was telling me he was handling, he was investigating, it felt taken care of, he worked it out with DCYF. I took him for his word.
For two years?
Yes.
So for two years, you had a reason to believe that there was a serious case involving the abuse of a child that you knew wasn't, or that you had reasonably believed wasn't being investigated, and you chose to?
No, I didn't know it wasn't being investigated. We had discussed a lot of these cases, and he was telling me he was working out, in, working on it, or he would tell me that he already, you know, spoke to DCYF, they're handling it. You know, they, they, they did A, B, or C with it.
Go back and just, uh, reference page 132. Incident 21-53, that, go back. Was this generated on, uh, 17/21?
Yes. That's.
Now, is this the, I believe you spoke about that it comes from three different phases. One is an initial call, fax, or something?
Correct.
Then the next step, the fourth is put into the IMS system, that correct?
Correct.
So, regardless of whether you got it down, if this was not entered into the IMS system, would it be something that you would normally follow up on?
No, I would give it to Sergeant Sullivan. He would create the call for service. He would create the OF, and he didn't do it. So I didn't know about it. I mean, I knew about the initial report and trusted he would follow up, pull the case numbers and do the investigation, but he didn't do it. He didn't, he didn't actually pull the case number. March of 2017, I would give him this. I have a lot of things that I do as well. Handling these juvenile cases. When I would follow up with him a few days later, because it would still be fresh in my mind, hey, where are we at with that case? All set. He would always have some type of excuse as to what he did with it. Now, he never, all of these DCYF cases, he did the same thing. He never pulled, and there's, there's a couple of them, I think, that are probably attributed. You'll see my name on them. But the majority of them, out of the 12 that are in here, were his. They were, had his name on them. So if he's communicating with DCYF and getting these faxes or getting these through email, I have no knowledge of this, because he's not pulling a call for service number, or he's not pulling a number. So when I come in the following day, like I do every day, and I check the log, there's no number there. So, I don't know that, that he's even looking into these things, because he hasn't told me. He hasn't communicated this with me. So, these cases are coming in from DCYF. He's not pulling numbers, and I'm not being made aware of them.
Except for the fax that was addressed to you. You were made aware of that.
Right, and I gave it to my detectives to follow up.
Can you take a look at page 137, please? The last sentence, "The mother and child are currently safe in Barnstead, New Hampshire." But, feel, and I believe this is the reporter, um, that if blank became aware of their location, their lives would be in jeopardy. So the person making this report was actually reporting that they were safe, is that correct?
Let's read the whole context of this, of. Says, um, "Through a conversation on 516 with the original reporter, the child aunt, the child's aunt, CPSW learned that the reporter received in the original report from the mother's abusive ex-boyfriend of Lebanon, Maine, who is not the child's father. She reported that she has seen both the mother and the child with bruises on them before, and believed the bruises are caused by, um, the boyfriend. She reported the information, uh, to, uh, to, in the report regarding child's name could be, uh, could be false. On the same day, CPSW also spoke with, and it's redacted, the school principal, uh, who reported, uh, the subject has come to school multiple times looking for the child, and the school has, uh, had to tell him he is no longer allowed on the property. On 517, CPSW spoke with the mother, who reported that subject has been physically abusive, uh, to her numerous times in front of her daughter over the past five years. She described one incident where he went to hit the mother, and she blocked it with her hand. She reported her hand was broken after that incident. She reported never telling the authorities because she was threatened, uh, he had threatened to kill the mother multiple times. CPSW also interviewed the child on the day who disclosed that she has witnessed the subject hitting and smacking her mother on multiple occasions. She further reported that she had spanked her hot enough to leave bruises, uh, on the, bruises multiple, uh, times. The mother is very worried that subject will try to kill her and her daughter. The mother also reported, uh, he is stalking her and her new boyfriend by showing up at their work and harassing them, as well as internet stalking them. The mother and the child are currently safe in Barnstead, New Hampshire, but feel that, uh, if he became aware of their location, their lives would be in jeopardy."
So what kind of investigation should Detective Sergeant Sullivan have done, uh, in a case where it was reported that the mother and child were safe?
But, again, it says that they're safe, but if they're located, their lives would be in jeopardy, which turned out to be true when she returned back to Maine, and she was killed by the suspect, and then the suspect killed himself. So Sergeant Sullivan could have tried to find out where this mother was and tried to offer her something, some type of, um, um, safe haven, uh, some type of, uh, victim witness coordinator. He, he didn't do it. He didn't do anything with the case.
So is your testimony that that's the job of the police department, not, uh, DCYF?
Yes, when, when a case comes in like this, he should've called DCYF, the investigator, and he could've, uh, simply asked a few questions. It's our, it's our duty, it's our duty incumbent upon us, as law enforcement officers, to protect the community and protect the people. And this is, this could've just been done with a couple of phone calls, and we could've worked with DCYF, and we could've coordinated this for this woman.
Oh, definitely. So you're implying that it's Sergeant Sullivan's fault that, uh, she was killed, that she actually went to Maine and was killed there, is that what you're saying?
I'm not saying that. I'm saying we could've helped her.
How do you know that?
We could've possibly helped her, if we located her. And offered, and offered her some services.
Your expectation is that, on a DCYF report that says the mother and child are currently safe, where, do you have reason to, uh, let me retract that. Do you have reason to believe that DCYF was acting, asking for an investigation?
Well, they, they.
Can I, I may be helpful here. Can, can we move on? You've asked the same question several times about currently safe. He read, everybody can read the report in its entirety, not just those few words. Let, let, let's move on here. We've got a long way to go.
Are you aware of whether or not DCYF wanted help on this case?
I would imagine they wanted some type of help, and they were notifying us. Uh, whether they wanted help or not, I think we should've offered some type of help. I mean, the woman was safe in Barnstead. Who's to say that individual, if he found out where she lived, wouldn't have come to Barnstead and, and have done the same thing to her here that he did to her in Maine?
On, uh, the bottom of page 141, which says, "Screenouts", doesn't that indicate that on April 30th, 2019, there was a finding of not abuse or neglect, and the same on May 1st, 2019, not abuse or neglect?
I don't, I don't know what those notes, this is a DCYF report, and I don't know what those notes mean.
Isn't it true that there actually was a police officer who reached out and the mother declined any assistance from the department?
That I don't know.
I'm gonna, um, go back to my order, the order, your order, really, um, to page 34, please.
Sorry, what page?
34.
This pertains to the, to the large seizure of marijuana, another drug-making paraphernalia, correct?
Correct.
The first sentence, "During the month of October, 2020, you had a conversation with our depart- department prosecutor, Tony Esti. How do you know that they had that conversation?"
Because I spoke with Tony Esti.
When did you speak to Tony Esti?
At my office.
When?
I don't recall the date. It was probably right after I received, or I found the motion to destroy, uh, evidence that was as a result of this, um, this case.
And, and when did you find that?
Excuse me?
When did you find that?
It would've been probably sometime in November. I don't recall the exact date that I found it.
How did you find it?
Um, I don't know if the, I think I was, I might, if I was, I don't know if I was reviewing the case, or if I found the, the notice. Uh, these will be, these will be put in my box if we get these notices. Um, a lot of stuff's put in my mailbox. And I saw the notice, and right away, um, I was kinda, I was thrown back by the information that was in it. And, uh, the next time I saw Tony Esti at my office, I discussed it with him.
And tell me about the discussion of the case?
So, the, the search of the, the home that's, that's referred to in this case, was done with both a, a written consent and with a verbal consent. And, uh, that is, um, documented on our body-worn cameras. And, uh, it is also, I've got a copy of the written consent right here, from one of the individuals. Uh, so I, I was thrown back when I saw that in the motion, it said, well, find the motion. It says, uh, "State of New Hampshire, by and through Barnstead Police Department, in respect request that the court permit the undersigned to", that's the correct record, sorry. "Now comes State of New Hampshire and through the Barnstead Police Department, in respect request that the court permit certain contraband to be disposed of or destroyed, and in support thereof, says as follows", and in support thereof, says as follows, and, I'll just scroll, I'll go down to paragraph three, so I don't have to, for the sake of time. Paragraph C3 says, due to the manner in which the items were obtained, that being without a warrant, and while without clearly establishing exception to the warrant requirements for the warrant, a determination was made that the case has been closed without formal charges being brought against any individuals involved. Now, I knew that to be false. That was, that was a false statement, and, because I was there, I personally got permission from these individuals, and again, it's all on body camera. So when I saw Tony, I brought this to his attention, and I told him that we needed to correct the record with the court. And that's how, that's how it came about.
And how did you, how did you come to believe that this was Detective Sergeant Sullivan and that he has lied?
Because Tony told me, and if you look at, on page 53, as well, Sergeant Sullivan did a, an eight-word report. After further investigation, this case has been closed. And he dates it September 4th, 2020, and that happens to be while I was out on administrative leave. And he had gone to Tony and told him that there was, we did not have a, any exceptions to the warrant. Tony followed what he had said and filed the motion that I just read to you with the court.
So that's, that's what Tony reported to you, that Detective Sergeant Sullivan told him that there were no clearly established exceptions to the warrant?
Yes.
Those were the words?
I can't say verbatim, but that was the conversation.
Well, did he definitely talk about exceptions to the warrant, or did he talk about a warrant, or did he talk about consent?
We talked about all the above.
Is it possible that what Attorney Esti reported to you was that Detective Sergeant Sullivan had said there wasn't a warrant in the search?
No. We talked about the exception, what the exceptions were, and I, in fact, I showed Tony the video as well.
You indicate in here that the consent was discussed with you at length, and at least one of the individuals getting, given written, giving written consent was captured on body-worn video, reviewing and signing the form. That's on page 34. Who discussed that, with Detective Sergeant Sullivan at length?
Oh, I discussed it with Sergeant Sullivan the day of the search warrant.
At the location?
At the office, after, after the search.
And did you report to Detective Sergeant Sullivan that you knew you actually should have stopped and gotten a warrant for this?
No.
Is there body camera footage that's going to reflect you at any time saying that you should have gotten a warrant?
Not that I'm aware of.
Would it have been a better police practice to stop when you understood what you were discovering and secure the location and obtain a warrant?
Getting a warrant is always the best practice. Again, you have to take into consideration the totality of the circumstances, the location, the time of day, the amount of manpower you have. So, we got written consent, it's nothing, there's nothing illegal about that, and what you're discussing is probably more of a matter of law for a judge to decide, not us here in this forum.
Not what?
Not for us to decide here in this forum.
Well, it's actually a decision that has to be made about whether or not to move forward with the case, isn't it?
We got consent.
Isn't?
Consent is, you know what consent is, an exception to the warrant.
Right. And isn't an evaluation, the validity of the consent, part of the evaluation?
I don't believe this is something that this board needs to discuss. We're not lawyers, we're not judges, and if you could move on.
I think that he directly states in this warning that it is my client's fault solely, the sole reason why this case didn't move forward, so it's directly relevant.
Again-
As a result.
When it comes to the issue of whether or not it is an actual warrant or an exception to a warrant, again, that is something for a judge to decide, not this board.
I don't think you're qualified to make that assessment. Chief, can you please answer my question about whether or not there is an assessment ever made on warrants versus consent prior to putting the issue before a judge?
Again, we got written consent, exception to the warrant, and that's the route that I chose to do that day.
So you're, you're actually answering yes, because you made that assessment, is what you're telling me, correct?
Nothing wrong procedurally, the way we handled this.
And, is it your testimony that Attorney Esti told you that Detective Sergeant Sullivan said there was something wrong procedurally with the way you handled it?
Detective Sullivan made the comment that the case was something along the lines of, there was no warrant, and there was no warrant exception or no, we didn't have a warrant, and we went in and searched that place without a, something along those lines, and as a result, Tony, motion.
Would the decision have been made to close the case prior to Attorney Esti filing that motion?
I wasn't here. Sergeant Sullivan was a senior officer. You would have to ask him.
So would Sergeant Sullivan have had the authority to close the case and make that determination?
I don't think he had the authority to do it.
So who, at that time, had the authority to do that?
I don't know who was placed in charge. I would say, I don't know who was in charge at that time. Well, at that time, the conversation with Tony Esti.
Do you, do you know where this conversation between Attorney Esti and Detective Sergeant Sullivan took place?
No.
Did you check any video records to see if it had been captured on video?
We don't capture audio, we just capture video, so it would be fruitless to even review a video of that.
So you're making this accusation that Detective Sergeant Sullivan was deliberately untruthful, based on a statement by Attorney Esti, that you say was made in November of 2020, so several months before, that you're not quite sure you remember exactly what he said, am I, is that correct?
No. What I'm telling you is he, he was untruthful because he was well aware that there were search warrant exceptions, yet that being the consent search to search that home. He was well aware of that. He was aware that, at the scene, he was aware that, we talked about it at the station. It was, it was no secret.
So Attorney Esti is going, he's been called as a witness in this matter. It's your testimony that you expect him to testify that Detective Sergeant Sullivan told him that there were no search warrant exceptions?
Yes.
And what if I told you Attorney Esti told me he doesn't remember that being said? Does that change your testimony today?
It's not going to change my testimony.
What if you, what if you were wrong, Steve? What if, what if, what if you're misheard, and you've made this pretty serious accusation about honesty and integrity, based on one conversation that you didn't hear correctly? Then what?
We could what-if this to death.
Did it matter whether or not the evidence was being destroyed in October of 2020?
Yes, it did.
Why did it matter?
It mattered for a lot of reasons, because there was still a case there that could have been prosecuted, or that could have been advanced, and that didn't, that didn't happen.
So there were, so is it accurate then that the sole reason for a non-prosecution decision here was because of Detective Sergeant Sullivan's statement?
Not the sole reason, no.
Well, what were the other reasons?
So, by now, this case has gotten a lot of, I guess, lack of a better term, publicity. So any evidence that, that we wish to obtain as a result of any future search warrants or investigations will probably be fruitless.
I don't understand the by, the by now part. We're, I think we should be talking about the timeframe of October of 2020, November 2020.
Okay, so what's your question?
What are the other reasons why the case couldn't have been prosecuted in the timeframe that?
Well, when, when we did this case, it was in May, and that's right, right around time COVID. And initially, we didn't affect an arrest. There was a memo that was sent down by the county attorney's office, really requesting all law enforcement agencies to hold off, if, if they are able, on arresting people, physically arresting people. This was a case that I looked at, I had found out after we had done the search warrant that there was a previous search warrant done at this location prior to my becoming police chief. So I looked at the big picture of this. I looked at perhaps, you know, looking at this federally and putting a much larger case together. So I was in no rush to go out and arrest these people. Again, you know, it was a consent search, as you know, if we can put larger cases together, utilizing a conspiracy, utilizing the old information plus the new information we got in May, we'd have a much better shot at, at a larger prosecution. So, having done drug work for almost 16 years, I, I'm pretty familiar with how these things operate. So I was in no rush to go out and grab these guys. I had other plans, but that went by the wayside.
You make a point in this warning, paragraph six, that Detective Sergeant Sullivan approved Officer Ryan's report, where Officer Ryan indicates that permission was given both verbally and in writing by the occupants to search the home. Correct?
What, paragraph six, you said?
Yeah.
Paragraph five.
Oh, sorry, I missed, I have a lot of writing on here, sorry. Yeah, paragraph five.
Correct.
And, and what was the significance of that, in your opinion?
In my opinion? So, in my opinion, he approved Officer Ryan's report, which, in which Officer Ryan indicates in his report that he both verbally and in writing received permission to search that home. So if he approved that report, and he knew that was, that narrative was in Sergeant Ryan's report, why did he tell Tony Esti that we didn't have permission to search that home? That's the significance of that.
You're referring to, pages are out of order. The first page of the report, I believe, appears in page 55. But I think you're referring to page 51, which appears to be page two of that report. Halfway down, second, well, the-
Third, fourth paragraph?
Third, fourth paragraphs, but-
Fourth paragraph, right.
Yeah, that's the consent that you're referring to there?
After obtaining written permission to search, to search forms, I request Detective Sergeant Sullivan to respond to the residence. No, there's something else in here. I'll have to find it, if you give me a couple of minutes.
It's right above it.
Hey, I mean, this paragraph, again, I'll, I'll go through the full report, but this paragraph says, after obtaining written permission to search forms, I request Detective Sergeant Sullivan to respond to the residence. So, he's saying in his report that he obtained permission to search forms, and then Sergeant Sullivan read the report, signed off on it, on September, on September 4th, 2020. This was initiated in 513, 2020, but Sergeant Sullivan went in on September 4th, when I was on administrative leave, and he signed off on this report on September 4th.
Isn't he also saying Detective Ryan, or Sergeant Ryan in this report, I guess you just scroll up to them, he's also outlining several instances of drugs that have already been identified- And detected prior to obtaining the written consent?
Okay, so that's got, that's got nothing to do, I mean, again, you're talking about a matter of law. You're asking me whether I did anything procedurally or against the law?
No, not asking you that.
Well, that's what it seems like.
No, but what I, what I would go back to is the point that you already acknowledged is that, wouldn't it then be, would it, would it be an accurate statement to say that the better police practice would have been to stop and get a warrant?
It's always the best practice to get a warrant. Again, depending on the time, circumstances, manpower. But there's a search warrant exception, and it's called consent, which is what we got.
And was the consent from the homeowner?
It was consent from, yes, the people that live there.
Was it the homeowner?
I don't know exactly who owns the home.
Doesn't that matter for consent?
No, not if it's being rented out.
Was this property that was being rented out?
I don't remember if I asked that specific question, but I knew that they lived there, and I might have asked if they were renters. I don't recall the exact conversation.
The owner that you have listed in the, or that's listed in the incident report, I don't want to say his name, as owning the, the evidence that was seized, is that the owner of the property?
Again, I don't know who owns the property.
Did you, is that the person that you obtained consent from?
We obtained consent from three people that were at the home that day. Again, I don't, I don't recall who owned the home.
Would it be a lie if Detective Sergeant Sullivan had said that there are problems in this case because of reliance on consent and the fact that there wasn't a warrant obtained? I'm not getting, I'm getting back into the charge. The charge here is that he lied. So if that's what he said, would it be a lie?
According to the reports from Officer Ryan, he obtained written permission to search warrants, and then again, in paragraph above, he said again, at the time-
My question didn't pertain at all to that. My question didn't pertain to that at all. My question was about Sergeant Sullivan's assessment, and the chief's assessment. It would be a lie if Sergeant Sullivan said that it was problematic in this case that a warrant wasn't obtained.
Again, it's not an answer to this.
It is. The accusation here is that he lied.
No, I believe what it says right here is that it's due to the manner of that being with a warrant or without one.
The accusation against Sergeant Sullivan is truthful net. Members will speak the truth at all times and under all circumstances. Members will not knowingly make false reports or enter or cause to be entered any false or improper information into any report or department documents. The second accusation is conduct unbecoming an officer. Conduct unbecoming an officer- The second accusation is conduct unbecoming an officer. Conduct unbecoming an officer shall include that which brings the department into disrepute or reflects discredit upon the officer as a member of the department or that which impairs the operation or efficiency of the department or the officer. Detective Sergeant Sullivan write either of these two motions?
No, Tony Esti wrote these motions.
So the language in these motions isn't the same.
On the information he received from Detective Sergeant Sullivan.
Well, the second one isn't information he received from Detective Sergeant Sullivan, is it?
First one is as well.
And the second one isn't.
Correct. That was a corrected motion.
You testified that you knew immediately when you saw it in November 2020 that this was a lie, this wasn't true, and that you talked to Tony Esti as soon as you saw him, also in November 2020. Why did you then sit on this until April 9th of 2021? Pretty serious allegation.
What do you mean I, why did I sit on it?
Why did nothing happen with it? Why didn't you write Detective Sergeant Sullivan up until April 9th of 2021?
Well, I found, as soon as I found, as soon as I found this motion, when I found it, whatever that was, again, I, I don't think I gave you a date. I didn't give you a date. So, is when I talked to Tony Esti about it. I think the first time I, I called him and we discussed it and again, I don't have the date, I don't know when it occurred.
No, it doesn't matter. Please stop testifying. He already testified twice, actually, this was in November.
So when I, when I, whenever I found it is when I brought it to Tony's attention and then I started looking into it. And quite frankly, since that time, I have not seen your client. He has not worked very much. He took quite a bit of time off, so there was no time to address it, no time to have a conversation with him about it. We can certainly go back and then check the times he's called out sick or whatever we need to do, but you can see he has not worked very much.
So, that means it was certainly at least before March 30th of 2021 when he was suspended and notified of his pending termination, correct?
Right.
Is there a reason why you would have said, at least twice, that it was November of 2020? I believe you even referenced, your frame of reference was returning from your suspension and seeing it there waiting for you? Is there a reason why you would have said that if it wasn't true?
I didn't say it was sitting there waiting for me. I don't recall. You're trying to pin me down to a date. I don't recall when I saw it, but when I saw it, I addressed it.
How would you have come across this if it? What do you remember of that when you came across it?
I was shocked when I read it. Again, I don't know if it was, if it was in my box, in my mailbox. I don't recall exactly how I came across it, but I do remember when I, when I, when I did see it. I looked at the case file and I started going through, in IMC, I started looking at, at the reports and I called Tony Esti on it.
So to be clear, your testimony now is that you don't remember where you saw it?
I saw it at the police department. Again, I don't remember if it was in my box when I first saw it or where it was exactly. I can't recall where I was standing when I got this, this, this motion.
Did you talk to Sergeant Ryan about this?
I did.
When was that?
I don't recall. Probably shortly after I, I discovered it.
We're at 9:31. I just wanted to ask one more question tonight. That the trend that I've noticed in these reports, in these warnings is that you, the date of March 14th keeps coming up for a brief narrative. That's what you're identifying as when Detective Sergeant Sullivan has completed a lot of these narratives. Is that correct?
Correct.
Do you know why Detective Sergeant Sullivan completed narratives on March 14th?
I have a pretty good idea of why he probably did it.
And what's that?
Is that I had discussed Sergeant Sullivan's activity with the, the board. I had mentioned to the board that he wasn't doing his job and he wasn't completing any of his reports. And that was around, I want to say the eleventh, the 11th of March or somewhere, the week, the week before the 14th, somewhere, was it, it was a Tuesday night. I had mentioned that he's not doing any of his reports.
So your testimony is that the week before, the 14th of March, you spoke to the members of this board about the matters that are before us here tonight?
Not all the matters. I spoke to them in general about him not completing his reports.
And how would Detective Sergeant Sullivan know that?
Well, I guess you would have to ask that, know what?
Know that you had that communication with the board.
I guess someone on the board must have told him.
Hard for me to imagine how the board aren't all witnesses now, but.
Well, I would think it was probably a person that was leaving the board at the time.
And we'll see what Mr. Sullivan says.
You just told me that you had a conversation with the whole board.
I said, and we'll see what Mr. Sullivan says. Maybe you have a totally different version as to why you did the reports in mid-March of 2021.
Just going to draw your attention to one document and then I swear that's it. Page 266. The email on the bottom. Does that refresh your recollection about why Detective Sergeant Sullivan had time to complete these outstanding reports?
Well, he's had plenty of time and we have documentation to prove that he had. I'll prove that. Paul. So you can't use an excuse that he had no time because it's totally false.
I expect that information to be produced to me prior to our next meeting, not just talked about in the next meeting, please. So it's your testimony that the fact that Sergeant Sullivan was assigned to light duty on or about March 12th of 2021 is unrelated to the fact that he was suddenly able to clear some of these older cases and write the final report?
Yes, that's my testimony.
Does the fact that Detective Sergeant Sullivan was able to write these reports indicate to you that he was actually keeping the investigative notes and keeping track of what was going on in these cases?
No.
So what, what do you think happened?
What do you mean?
How did, how did he write the reports?
How did he write the reports? Well, he wrote a lot of the reports and you want to go through them one by one, these DCYF reports. He basically copies what the DCYF investigator writes and he transposes it into his own report. In some reports, he writes two lines and we can go through each one of them if you'd like. I'd be glad to sit here and do it.
We're going to go through all of them, but
Okay.
Okay, that's, that's your third last question. Just a couple instructions for the board before we meet again and Chair, you can talk about when you want to meet again, but something between now and when you meet again on this matter. Members of the board, you should not talk to the police chief or any other member of the police department about this matter, about Sergeant Sullivan's employment situation. You should also not talk between or among yourselves about this, about this matter. What you can do in the meantime is you may review any notes you've made tonight and as long as you don't provide those notes to any other members of the board, they are not public records and they remain your personal notes. And finally, you may, in the meantime, review the documents that you have been provided tonight, that you all have copies of. Again, don't discuss them with any other member of the board. Thank you.
There's awful lot of information that I've requested tonight. I don't think that next week is enough time to get that information to me and enough time for me to be able to adequately view it.
So you mean June 1?
Works, Rob.
So we will have our regular board meeting next week and then we will continue this hearing on June 1st at 5 o'clock.
I'm sorry, I didn't say what time you said. 5 o'clock?
Thank you very mu- Yes, motion to adjourn. We have a second. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. You too.